Please just to the God of the United States of America. And to the Republic for worship fans, one nation under God invisible with a liberty and justice throne.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, it's all the meeting to order. Any other through? And stuff to add to the agenda? All right, I'll make a motion to prove the agenda is printed. All in favor? Oh, Gary. Prove the minutes on November twentieth. I would make a motion to approve the minutes from November twentieth, along with all of our election results printed within.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, through the plane.
Uh, the numbers I got looking in through there were. Were general was two, six, one. Five ninety-two point nine five. Two, six, one, five, nine, two, point nine, five. And I think the drainage on the front is twenty-two fifty-seven point twenty-five, two, two, five, seven point two, five. Those are not right ones, but that sound good.
What I got, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
It's good to see that. We tear the concrete out.
Now they're gonna have to wait till it warms up the board.
Well, I know they've been busy, but.
Yeah.
We knew what would happen.
General public concerns, anybody here for general public? Nobody in waiting. Okay, moving on. Ben.
That's two weeks in a row, Ben, you've been on, we've gotten to you on time.
Right? No, it's early.
Don't worry, it'll catch up to you.
Uh, the one item that I've got on the agenda for today is to approve pay voucher number ten to Dixon Construction. For two hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. This was a mistake on our part. Uh, last or two weeks ago when we did voucher number nine, I paid them. For seven tenths of an acre of mulch and seed, and it was actually point seven five. So. Yeah, we missed that five hundreds on those two line items and. Equal to about a two hundred and seventy dollar. Pay voucher, so this will end up being our sub-final voucher.
Who caught the point?
Uh, their office manager.
I was gonna say they're very meticulous in there.
Yeah, so we, obviously, we send them a copy of the pay voucher that we run through. With the check that they get and she reached out and said that. The agreed amount was point seven five, so, yeah.
Outside of that, it's just a correction.
It's just a correction, yep. So we'll, uh. Run through the paperwork and once the DOT blesses the project and. Signs off on all of the materials paperwork, then we can finalize the project out.
Okay, well, in the meantime, I would make a motion to approve the voucher number ten to Dixon Construction for the two hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, Gary.
That is the only item that I have on the agenda. Guys did end up going out over the weekend and running some of our roads, uh. Believe yesterday because it was. Late enough in the day that it actually started accumulating here. We didn't run Saturday. Uh, we went out Sunday morning and ran, uh, today they'll be. Cleaning up our gravels and. Clearing up any residual at the intersections.
How much snow did you guys get down there?
Really wasn't. Yeah, maybe an inch.
Not to make it so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the state roads where they put brine down turned to a sheet of ice Saturday night.
Yeah.
So. They ended up fighting that, but.
So, go ahead.
Oh, curiosity. Well, the blessing of the DOT is per usual on projects. I mean. About one each, well, they'll get all that done and because that's just.
Right, the the remainder for this project is the retainage, so it'd be the twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-four cents.
Yeah.
Uh, they've been down, they've site reviewed it, they're fine with everything visually. Now it's just gonna be like.
Paper trail.
The paper trail, so.
Quarter of next year.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be with the holidays and everything coming up. They're they're slow anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
So it'll be sometime in January.
Oh, that'd be sooner than I thought. Okay, this carries, but then that's officially done.
Yep, and that'll be officially done, and then we'll request reimbursement for the whole project once. Once it's done.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
Not bringing up bad thoughts, but. Um, beans were back out. Our crews are back out. In the dark and backing up and and we just remind guys to make. Sure we don't cut corners and.
Back into.
Back into ditch and twist the truck and I mean, I know. It can happen to anybody, but let's try to be as safe as we can. And then my other question was, I don't remember us ever talking. How did your intern? Work out this summer?
She was good. Uh, she did some surveying for us here this year. She. Saw some of the construction projects that we were doing between the bridge project up north. I I think it was it was worth. It was worth what we, I don't know what the final tally is for what we paid her for hours, but it was worth bringing her in. I mean. I think she got. Six or seven surveys completed for us, so. That that alone, if you hired that out, would be more than what we paid her, so.
Thinking about doing that next year?
Yeah, possibly. Um, I know right now she's. Still trying to get cleared for MEPS for enrollment. I think plan is to get enrolled at Iowa State and start second semester if she hasn't gotten accepted. Into the program yet, so.
Glad that worked out.
They're good pro. Programs because they expose people to Humboldt County and maybe they like to stick around either.
Yep, you know, I mean, yeah, she. From the Renwick area, so.
Yeah.
Are you driving that? She might. Want to come back next year and do another internship.
Yep.
Which would even be better because she's got.
I think she's looking at going into construction engineering.
Good.
So.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right.
Beyond that, uh, our truck is. Over at Highway Truck, we went down, took a look at it last week. Um. They're waiting on the wing and front plow to show up, but they've got all the hydraulics and everything, so they'll. Have all of the mounting brackets and wiring and everything. Put on and ready, so as soon as the snow equipment shows up, which they thought would be the middle of December. We'll have it. Put on and to us, so hopefully before Christmas, we'll have that new truck here.
Don't even need to use any of that snow equipment.
Right, that'd be nice.
Perfect, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. We'll be about twenty minutes, so. We have been expedited this. Move on down to committee reports. This past Tuesday, the twenty-first. That afternoon, I had a de-categorization board meeting. But there was a lot on the agenda, so we elected to do it by Zoom, or in this case, it was team meetings. So yes, it was short and sweet, but we did have our de-categorization board meeting on the twenty-first afternoon. Um, let's see, that was my only little official after meeting.
Yeah, and all I had was, um, name, typical check signing stuff for the IDBA on Tuesday. Two weeks, every two weeks payroll. I'm gonna have to pay the roll, they'll have to. Oh, did you get the gates put up? Okay, awesome, so we're all locked up tight. Good. Drive on. I will say the sump pump in that. Doesn't work. I don't know if we even need it, there's no water.
I drove, yeah, I walked out and looked at it here.
The leachate pump's dried up, there's no water in the in the whole manhole. I though, I just went and checked the pump and when you throw the brake on, it drips. So if it ever does rain, one might have to change a sump pump.
All right, I have to go back, uh, the thirteenth. After the meeting, I went to. To the IV and helped them pack the meals for, uh. The school and for the. The food pantry that, um. IV and. And Sanson Construction donated to, uh, people in need. Then I came back up here at what, two o'clock and we canvassed the election. On the thirteenth, then this past week. We had, uh, our Edno Finance Meeting. On the phone. I guess. Long story short, um, we meet. This Tuesday night. Or tomorrow night, I guess, uh, and I'm going down to Fort Dodge for that meeting. There's some issues that they're gonna discuss and. Rather than listen on the phone or the computer, I'm gonna go down to Fort Dodge and listen to it. Saturday, I also drove around. Uh, Rutland Flats. Couple times to see what I could see any. Thing that was going on out there just for. Um, to see there. Still actively doing so. Um. And I went up through Rutland. And looked at their new. Community. Place there to park. Like, it's gonna be a nice building, like a. Concrete bombshell for, I mean, it's pretty good size for. And I I'm assuming it's gonna have. Canopied over the out over, so it'll be a very nice addition to that, uh, Roseville Park, so. That's all I did.
Okay, on Tuesday morning, um, we met at the hospital for the Humboldt County Opioid Alcohol Coalition. And again, we're, um, going over the community assessments and, um, we've been interviewing people within the community. To see what they think the needs are and, um, and also to see what their level of awareness is. Because depending upon their level of awareness determines really what we need to do within the community. We found out the level of awareness was pretty low in Humboldt County so far, but we haven't gone through the the, um. I'll correlate and all the information and all that yet to see exactly what we're gonna do. And then Doug Marcel called me regarding, um, some work that he was gonna be doing in Corinth County and neither one of our. Um. He wanted me to come and look at it, but, um, his schedule didn't match with my schedule, so that didn't get done. So, um, but he's doing some work. Do you know what that is, Terry? We're at in Corinth, that what he's talking about?
I don't, I would have to look it up.
Okay. He was gonna do it last week, but then he he's gonna end up doing it this week, I guess.
After the meeting today, I'm going out and look at it.
Oh, are you, Dave? Okay.
Yeah, he called me this morning.
Okay, yeah, I told him that. He called me yesterday afternoon wanting to know if I could, if 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 it would work to go then. And I said, I was already on the way up to Minnesota. That's all I had.
All you got? I did not have an official meeting last week.
I'd also bring up Dave for, uh. The Edmo, um, the food pantry, the holiday programs, they're, um, looking for people to, uh, support. Families or children, uh, or, uh, seniors. Uh, you can call down to the office down in at, uh, on Main Street, the number six oh four. Six, five, five, oh. They're trying to set up, uh, I don't, I tried calling them this morning a couple of times, but I don't, they're in there yet, but. Um.
They don't start coming on Monday.
Mondays, all right. But I will try to get a hold of them and see how many families they have, and I know that the churches do a good job for getting, uh. Those, try to give as many of those families covered as they can. Uh, wrapping gifts and and whatnot, so if you could, uh, if you have, I know you're inundated, everybody is inundated. This time of year with donating here, there and everywhere, but I guess it's the way we've always take help, take care of our own, so. Um, that would be a huge help here in town. Thanks.
It's a great program.
Oh, are you Amy?
Did you give me some sense?
Yeah.
That's not sanitary.
Oh, here we are.
Are you ready for me?
Yeah, we're sure.
Are you ready for us?
Yeah.
You want me to leave one just?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Oh, there she is. Hey, Sandy.
Good morning, Alyssa.
How are you?
I'm doing good, and you?
Good. Okay. Pardon me, it's really cold outside, so. This is our annual funding request, um, you know, a vast majority of most of what we've been working on, Rick, is your. Um, liaison to the HCD A board, um, so I'll go through just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Um, so on the right side of the folder, you have, um, what we call our dashboard, it's kind of this color-coded looking circle. Just go through a couple of things, um, so I think what's most important for the sake of our conversation on quality of life, um. Is our partnership this year with EMA to serve as the primary agency for economic recovery, um, that was a process we worked through with Kyle. Um, very, very detailed and organized, um, great things to say about Kyle, so, um. We did solidify that. The other component would be our legislative advocacy. And this year we saw visits from Thompson, Feimster, Ernst, and Lieutenant Governor. Working through workforce attraction and retention, um, we did try something new this year with our region. Um, and did a talent attraction campaign, so that was different and unique for us. Um, we did finally bring back, um, post-COVID, our CEO Network events, so we're excited to be hosting those again. We also did something a little bit different, um, we started in the pandemic, um, and continued them. We offer resource guides for businesses. Um, resident resource guide, employee training, and alternative workforce, so we'll continue to publish those. Um. It's Three Rivers Industrial Park, you guys are well-versed on that, it's making us spend a lot of time on that, um. In case you don't know, um, that bid was awarded a couple of weeks ago to Rash Construction, um, out of Fort Dodge for Phase One. Human welfare, um, we continue our efforts with the pantry, um, and overseeing that effort. Um, and then this year joined, um, the Humboldt County Prevention Coalition, which Sandy sits on, I believe as your representative, so. Affordable housing, goodness, we've done a lot of projects, um, I'm sure you're aware of the Humboldt North Apartment Project. Um, we also did Homes for Iowa Homes in Livermore and Gilmore City this year. Um, and HCD A did commission, um, and are working through a senior living study. We did have a market analysis done on, on the senior living needs. Um, nine oh one Taft also, um. Is under contract, um, and then strategic plan, um, you'll see that as you continue through your packet. Looks a little bleak, um, we started that in two thousand twenty-two, um, and we are almost finished with that, so what you see there is. Is just the remaining three items, um, we will do a strategic plan in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then our organizational statistics. So what you see, we break them down every five years, um, and then organizationally since inception. So you can see some pretty astounding statistics, um, capital investment fifty-five point two-five million, three hundred forty-nine. New jobs, six hundred seventy-four retained, and additional tax valuation of thirty-nine point two-five million. Those are projects we've touched in some way. Um, somehow we've contributed to that. If we did not, that project isn't charted, um, under our statistics, so. That's on the right side of the packet. On the left side, you have our formal request letter, um, I know you folks had talked. When I was here last year about incremental increases as opposed to what we've done in the past. Um, where we kind of wait, you know, a period of years and do a significant one. We are not going to increase that all this year. Budgets are super concerning, I'm sure, so we're just gonna fine tune a couple of things, um. And maybe shore back on just a few things, we aren't gonna do an increase, um, we may look to start those incremental increases next year. We're certainly not gonna do it this year, so you'll find the same request level, um, and letter associated with that. And then you have a board of directors list, um, we did add new board members, um, David Speed with Midland Power. Matt Brown, Poli's Food Service, and Nick Nielsen, Casey Nielsen is our agricultural rep. And then lastly, you'll find our budget, um, and that's just an estimate of of where we are and where we hope to be, so. Most importantly, any questions?
I have one.
Oh.
I've had a lot of people questioning about if anything has ever. Um, been decided or worked on for, and I know the North and South Care Center. Are huge topics and yesterday I was going to church, I see there's a dumpster. Over at the North Care Center, so. Hearing through the grapevine that they're making apartments out in.
Yeah, that was our Humboldt North Apartments, I'm sorry, I should have been more specific, um, Bruce, yes, so, um, it's ish thirty thousand square foot. Um, and that will be converted to a minimum of twenty-eight units. Um, I think ideal is thirty, it depends on what comes out for two-bedroom, one bed, one bedroom. Um, yes, and they started what we're calling demolition, so just interior on the twenty-fourth of October, so that's correct, you probably do see action there.
Hmm, so. The other side is, is I never worried about it when I was twenty-five. But there's a lot of people to do.
Where am I gonna go?
Where are, where do we put people? Where do we place? You know, there's only so many rooms at Springvale or Assisted Living or, you know, some of the people that. I knew at North Care Center are now in Brit, and it's a real pain for. Those people to try to be seen.
Yeah.
I know I'm not putting you on the spot, but.
No, no, and and I, I'm thankful that you are, we did commission for a study, um, it was conducted by MDS Research out of Texas. So we have data to support, um. What I think becomes the biggest challenge is that. From a state legislative standpoint, there are more beds in the state of Iowa than there are need for the beds. Um. The problem that we have is what we call these deserts, so Humboldt County would be a desert, right? We don't have enough beds. So what we're trying to help educate, and Michelle at the hospital is doing a fantastic job, is that. It's not a bed if I have to ship them to Bendor, I'm just making this up, I'm, but that's not a bed to Humboldt, right? Like, you're gonna ship them all the way over there, and then what about mental health? And we're back to COVID when you had to see through a blast, like, to me, that's not service. Um, so licensing new beds, um, I think we can do that, I think it would be a conversation we would have to have. And and help educate, but we have the data now to support that, that was part of doing the study. Um, we certainly need nursing home beds, right? But what we looked at with the study is what does a senior living campus look like, right? And so how do I, what today folks want to do is age in place. Um, and so what happens when I call the nursing home and I'm put on a seventy-person wait, unless I'm making this up. And I need a bed now sooner than what I thought that I did when I called, and so this aging in place concept allows you to. You know, sort of start at that independent level and work your way through. So that is the model that HCD A is looking at, I want to be very clear. Our, I mean, certainly we will. Let the market dictate what we can do, but our vision would be aging in place, that would be our vision. Um, so it wouldn't just be now, phase one looks heavy on the nursing home side and light on the independent side. Because of our data. But we need, in theory, the best model for us is to look at it holistically. How do I age in place? And so that's the model that we are looking at for the study. Is how many of each units in theory do we need to support that?
For me, only being forty, my brothers and sisters being a lot older than I am, they're more concerned, but.
Yeah.
It, I mean, there's a lot of people that are. What what are we gonna do?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it at the board level, and there's a couple of board members. Um, that are saying, you know, I've gotta be mindful of this for my parents, or they're coming back home with me, you know, so. We certainly understand it, we are doing the same thing we did with the daycare and same thing we did with the hotel, we want the data to prove it first, so we did the study. We did get the study back. Ish, May or June, um, and so we have a small, um, subcommittee of HCD A. Um, Jen Hansen as the finance rep, Joel Armitage Construction, and Michelle Slater Hospital Healthcare, um, that are working through. What this study looks like, what do partnerships look like?
And actually, we've been working on it for five years at least.
I mean, you're talking about millions of dollars, so we'd really have to look at what makes the most sense. What can we sustain? I mean, you're right, we've been talking about it, but we actually have data now to support it. Um, I think it was an eight-month process for the studies, we started it back in the fall of twenty one, uh, twenty-two, so. It is, we, it is an active discussion, it's something we continue to discuss, we have.
So is the staff.
And then there's the issue of, um, staffing too, I mean, uh, Marion Home in Fort Dodge, when I was looking for a place for mom, they have a whole wing. That they could open up, but they can't get the staff. To work for the wing.
Well, and that's the other thing in talking to the state, that's what's been difficult is, you know, let's make this up and use your Marion Home example, but Marion Home might have twenty. Beds, but they can't stack twenty, so that's, is that an opening then in itself, right? And so even though that's an available bed, do we have the staff to support that? And so again, looking at, you know, what partnerships exist, are there developers like we did with the hotel that'll come in and develop it? And what does that look like? And so there's a whole host of options that we're working through.
There's all kinds of rules on private. That that affects the whole thing.
Medicare does not, the state Medicare does not reimburse as they should. I mean, it is a huge deficit for what Medicare will will pay, what the true cost is and what, and that's where a lot of the problem. And that's what happened with North Care, they had so many Medicare. And that they didn't pay it enough or the full rate, so that really hurt.
Yeah, and there's certain, obviously, just with any industry, there's regulations, if you want Medicare to pay for this room, you have to have X number of beds in the same room, and you have to provide. And so well beyond my realm of knowledge, so we've been proceeding carefully with the experts and the folks that. Um, are well-versed, um, and like I said, Michelle's been a great support, she has long-term care, but you're absolutely right, Bruce, that it it's a topic of conversation. It's ongoing, um, it was something that was identified by, um, Humboldt County Housing as a priority, we just. Were were active, we're working on it, just gotta find a system that works, and like Sandy said, I'm gotta be able to staff it, I have to be able to fund it. Um, you know, it it's. If if it's a community investment model and we're asking folks to invest.
It's such a thing that. The the community almost has to invest in it.
I know.
Whole program. A low return on your money, just because it's something the community needs.
Right, and that conversation looks different than this is an investment, you're gonna get a great return, it's more like. This is the same as a CD rate, just helps the the community, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're working through all of those options, um, and and Jen has in her portfolio. I'm in the financial world, quite a few nursing homes, um, and senior living facilities, so that's been helpful too. So that's been helpful too, just, you know, what's worked in the past, what hasn't worked. And so we are, like I said, working through that. We do have a subcommittee. It's not gonna be as fast as we want. I understand that, um, but we're doing the best that we can.
I understand. I just thought I'd bring it up because I know there's lots of interest out there that concern, worry, you know?
It's a waitlist. Yeah, I, I know my office manager can, trying to get her dad on. I know he's on a waitlist, but he has no idea like how far down he is.
Well, and the sad thing is, even if he's over sixty and gets that up, right? What happens if he suddenly leaves it tomorrow?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And so that's where we get into, well, let's take him to Pocahontas, or I'll go to our brother, wherever, you know, and. Certainly, we, we want from a, from a mental health standpoint, those folks to stay here where they're close to family and friends and the networks that they've established. So. Yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of.
Did you say over sixty?
A lot of work ahead of us.
No, I didn't say any age. Look, I'm close to, I get it.
That's it, I don't want talking with.
Right, right. Oh, shoot.
Now I'm mad at you.
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
Income part of the, and I'm not, you know, no, you're not on the board like this, but what is uh, income from, what is part of this program?
That is our business investment program. That's the formal name that we call it. So that is actually reaching out to the businesses to invest in H C D A.
Yeah, and that's basically been, well, it is built, it was projection of the next year, the same as the year, basically.
Yeah, we just typically project. It usually ebbs and flows with the economy. In COVID, it wasn't nearly that high.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So that's just business contributions?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
And that, is that the entirety of your income?
Is that?
You're under the income section, that, that's it?
Yes.
City, county partners, and then a little, this lady said it comes from.
That offsets the cost of our audit. We take that out of our IRP fund.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a big budget. I see that. Hopefully, you're not paying your board members too well.
It must be good. Yeah, okay. They do have coffee though. Well. Don't give them a coffee, maybe throw a cookie at them, showing up for the meeting.
Coffee at the Caribbean is as close as you're getting to the Caribbean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at it under the, when we get started on the budget.
Well, we're, we're always real good about coming early on and giving us a nice presentation, and I hope that your research into. Long-term care facilities is picking up speed from what I gather. Sometime sooner than later, you have the answers that you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly do engage.
Pretty much all late. I mean, they have, they get it all figured out.
Yeah, I mean, we just.
Financing, I'm sure.
Financing, oh, financing is usually the biggest.
Yes.
I mean, always the biggest issue.
It is, and this one's gonna be tricky. I mean, it's not. Twenty million dollars, so. That's daunting. So, yeah, we just.
I sometimes wonder if you'd make the community aware that, hey, there's a lot of money in Humboldt County.
Mm-hmm.
That's, they could, they could put it in there, get a small return and do something great for the community.
Yeah. I think our, our immediate next step is to figure out what that product is. What am I asking you to invest in? Is it just a nursing home in phase one? Is it a whole campus? Is the, what is it, what is being offered? Who is managing it? I think that's important for us when, especially when we're talking about placing our loved ones, is what does the care look like? And so we're trying to determine what that product is today, um, so that we can ask those questions of the community. Are you aware? Certainly, everyone knows with the closure of North and South, we don't have, nothing filled that gap. So I think there would at least be common knowledge that the need is there. It's just how do we quantify that? How do we say based on our population, et cetera, et cetera? Um, and so I think we have the data to support it. We just need to know what product we're asking you to invest in, so.
Well, good luck with that. And in the meantime, between now and next year, you can always come to me, we're back.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. And if you guys have any questions, certainly let us know, um, or have to field them.
South Care Center got closed, but also, right?
What's that?
South Care Center got sold, but no plans at this time.
That's my understanding.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you much.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Yeah, thanks, Sandy. Good to see you.
You too.
Okay. Sure. Are you waiting on everybody or just you?
It's just me.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm Johnny Presswood. I'm the CFO for Elder Bridge. And, um.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Did you receive our packet of information via email?
I don't know. I think so.
Okay, I brought some dusting cakes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so, um, so Elder Bridge, uh, this last year, we, um, did quite a bit of. Assisting in Humboldt County. We did a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to the citizens of Humboldt County. And uh, increase of about seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. For your elderly citizens. Um. As the last gal that was here was stating, there's, there's a significant need for the, the folks that are over sixty and, um.
There's that number again.
I hate that.
That's a state number that they make us throw out there. We'll just blame it on them.
On the other side of the mountain, no.
So, um. So we have, uh, in the last year. Uh, initiated a, a pilot program called I R T C, kind of ties in with the last gal and the needs uh, of the community. Um, right now, that is in the Spencer region. It's, it's Spencer County, and then each of the counties surrounding that. It's a state pilot program called Iowa Return to Community. And it's to cover that gap when somebody is injured in, they are in a nursing home or in the hospital. And they would like to return home to age in place. So we do a ninety-day program there and, um. We allow people to come home, we get them grab bars, walkers, ramps, uh, home-delivered meals. Whatever it is that they need, they may need, needed volunteer to go and pick up their prescriptions. Um, groceries, whatever it is they happen to need, and it covers that gap so that they don't end up back in the hospital. Or back in the nursing home. Um, and it's a, a program we would like to try to find funding for. To get over our entire twenty-nine county region. So, um, we are working with uh, hospitals. And, um, nursing homes in that region to try to develop a way to tap into the Medicare dollars. Um, there's a program that every hospital has as a, uh. Person is put in the hospital to try to get them home. There's, um, I'm trying to think of the word for it, but it's a way to get them on their own, in their, in their home and not come back to the hospital. Because the hospital gets, uh, in trouble when, when people return to the hospital. So we're trying to find that as a, as a source to develop over our entire twenty-nine county region. To, uh, help people age in place. Uh, so that's one of the things that we've been doing, uh, over the last year. Um, another of the wonderful things is, um. The grand pads, and that's for anybody that's in one of our programs that is socially isolated. They have a way of doing video calls with their families or with their doctor or with us, so we can check up on them. And it's restricted, so they don't get any spam. They don't get any bad emails or phishing or anything like that. And it's, but it does get them to connect with their family, and it's specially made for, um, actually, people over seventy-five. And it's because you lose some of the moisture in your, your fingertips, so you can't use the touchscreen very well. So they make it specifically for those, uh. The aged individuals to help them with things. Um, and, uh, for the dementia side of things, we have started a robotics pets. Um, we did that with our COVID, uh, ARPA funding. We got, uh, pets in for those that, um. Uh, when they have dementia, they need some, some contact, and a lot of times they're in nursing homes, so they can't have contact all the time. But these robots actually interact with them. So if they pet them or talk to them, they will bark or they will purr or whatever. They can brush them. They, they completely interact with the, the individual, and it's really helping. Yeah, so it's, it is helping them. Yes. Um, so.
You don't have to worry about taking them outside, litter boxes.
E- exactly, a lot less maintenance.
Yeah.
So. Exactly. So, um, so this year, uh, if you look at the, um. The information just from your county, and this will insert, you can see what the cost of the services were for your county. Um, we had an increase. Um, of population in your county that are over sixty. On, so on page two, um. That increase is anybody that has reached the age of sixty and over. It's increasing in all of our counties. As you well know, the, the young folks are, are heading to the bigger cities, and they're not always returning. So the percentage of population that's over sixty is increasing each year. And, um, so last year, the donation that you, um, put up for Elder Bridge. For that money, for every dollar that you gave us, we, you received twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents of services in return. So your return on investment. Is that that twenty-two hundred percent? So. Um, so this year, we would like to see if we can get three dollars and fifteen cents per senior. Um, in your county. Last year, we did ask for three dollars and ten cents per senior. Um, but in return, you're receiving sixty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents per senior, based on last year's budget. And this money, it allows us to pull down state and federal dollars. Um, those dollars come from the O A A, uh, which is the Older Americans Act. Becomes the, the most continuing resolutions that, that we've all been hearing about. That's what funds those, uh, those dollars. So, uh, we are still running under F Y twenty-two dollars right now. Uh, there hasn't been an increase in the O A A funding for that long. And, um, they're telling us that F Y twenty-five is going to be the same amount. So we're looking for other ways to do this. So we have, um. Really concentrated on grants. Uh, so we write a lot of grants. We have a full-time grant writer. Um, so far, we're right, right around seventy thousand dollars, what we raised through grants, through those external sources. Um, and as you know, it's, there's always a match that goes with grants. And so that's where the counties come in. So when, when we receive money from the counties, we use that as match to pull down all the grant dollars that we, we can get. Um. This last year, our, our budget was right around eight million dollars. And, um. It, I know that seems like a lot of, it, it does.
Then it is the, that of the twenty-nine county.
It's all twenty-nine, yes. So if you divide it by twenty-nine counties, it's really not a, a whole lot. So, um, about two hundred and fifty thousand per, per county, if you divide it up evenly.
It's, they're all even counties.
Exactly.
Do you do by population?
Um, we, we do it based on need.
Okay.
So, um. If the need is greater in one county or another, then the, that's the county that gets them. It's whoever asks us for services. We don't force our services on anyone, but we try to make the services available. Um, one of the main services that we've had increased is the food. There's a lot of food insecurity, and, uh, so we've had a lot more people getting either home-delivered meals or hitting those congregate sites. Um. And I believe that Towneville County only has the, the home-delivered meals at this point through us, that sister's home style meals. Um. We would love to see a congregate site, but, uh, you know, those are hard to run. You know, they're usually based on volunteers coming in and, and helping with things, or the, the people that are attending, doing things. And, um, having a stable board that really is invested in what they're doing is, is really needed for those congregate sites. So, um. But our main focus is to make sure that, that individuals have food. So ninety-two thousand of your hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for just a food. So. Yeah. So, um, and then, of course, based on that population, um, the counties. Put their money up. So let's say Sarah Gordo County, there's a lot more individuals in that county, so they put forward a lot more money. They average right around thirty thousand dollars that they, they give us each year. Um. And if, if you look on that page two, our ask for you.
Oops. Yep, it's there and.
So anybody in Humboldt County would deal with, or that job.
Typically, we have an eight-hundred number that, um. We can help anybody, no matter where they're located. So, um. We're used to working with rural communities. Um, we do a lot of, um, over-the-phone stuff that where we can. Um, and we do visit folks' homes to see if they need anything, depending on what their need is. Um. We've also, uh, initiated a new program this year called, um, Grant Families. It's for people who, um. For some reason or another, they now have their grandkids that they're raising. And a lot of times, the environment now to raise kids is different than it was when we raised our children on the first time go around. So we have a program where you can call in and, and see about getting assistance, you know? Uh, it can be anything. It could be volunteers. It could be, um. To help with some of those meals, but it's, it's a whole new wing that we're just starting. Um, it was last. You know, it was F Y twenty-three that we started that program. So, um, using those character for dollars that we have, um. Those were always a harder one for us to spend, so we were looking for new ways to, uh, to help the communities. And we noticed that with a lot of the drug addictions, a lot more grandparents are raising their, their grandkids. So, um, we thought that that would be a, a key place to use those dollars to help that individuals.
All righty, thank you.
I, I thank you. We really appreciate all the support that we receive from your county. And, uh. Please let me know if there's anything else that I can answer for you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have nine, you might set it in that chair. Sandy's, that's her chair.
Yep, I'll be back next week. This is my last week.
Okay, anything else come from the board? If I got anything, Gary. During none, I can motion that we adjourn.
Better.
Any discussion? All favorites.
I.
I.
Gary, we are adjourned at nine twenty.
All right. Hey, Dave, thanks for being able to go out with, um, uh, Doug on that.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, all right. We'll see you guys next week.
Yeah, bye.
Bye-bye.
Well, I see you party.
I jumped up.
Exactly.
Right around that apartment.
Exactly, I, I just. One of the parts I saw.
Thank you.